I'd like to call to order this evening, the Board of Commissioners meeting for February 20th, 2014 at 7:01 PM. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Those who would, please join us and rise. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day, Lord. Bless each hand and heart that's represented here this evening. We ask you to guide us, lead us, and direct us in the business of the city. Lord, please bless the ones that are in the storm's harms way. Allow us to be home safe. Lord, thank you for the interest of the community as we sit in this beautiful city hall for Fairview. Allow us to make the decisions that are wise, and we ask this all in your Son's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have addition of E4. I'd like to ask for addition, discuss, and/or take action of the vacant board seat filled by a planning commission member. And the second is a correction on 9C. If the agenda can be corrected, instead of the RML-12 being RM12, would there be any other additions or deletions on the agenda this evening? Do we have a motion for...
Move to proof.
Motion? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item is citizens' comments. We have this evening in citizens' comments, Mr. Scott McCoy. If you would approach the podium, sir. You have three minutes to deliver your comments or questions. Welcome.
My name is Scott McCoy. I grew up here in our town and have personally witnessed Fairview's transformation and development over the past 40 years. I have one comment and two requests tonight, and appreciate having this opportunity to voice my concerns at our BOC meeting. For my comment, I would like to encourage all who have not observed the city manager interviews that occurred this afternoon to go watch them when they're available online. There were some great candidates, great questions, and interesting answers. I think it's important for voters to understand a bit more about the candidates so that they can have a knowledgeable frame of reference when evaluating each BOC member's action in making their choice on this important issue. For my first request, I would ask that in the future, and particularly with the upcoming decision on our city manager hire, that the BOC refrain from conducting votes under secret ballot mechanisms. The BOC's intentions with this secret practice might be rooted with good intentions, but I think it may have illegal implications. Further, your specific individual vote matters to the citizens. We need to understand each of your specific positions on city matters, particularly when we are casting our votes to select commissioners that best align with our interests and visions for our wonderful city. My second request, specifically tied to our city manager selection, would be that each BOC member, when they cast their vote for city manager, offer a brief explanation on their rationale for landing on their choice. The city manager is perhaps the most critical position on our tax payroll, and the hiring choice will likely impact our city for years into the future. This fact, combined with the concerns and unease that I and others have felt around the process of execution, warrants some extra communication efforts from our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. John Hall. Welcome.
Now I feel like a repeating record. I feel personally that this upcoming vote that you all are going to have for city manager is probably one of the most important votes you've had in your term here. This will in ways direct the future of the city. Four of the five sitting on the commission right now are potentially involved in some form of election in this year. I feel personally, and I think other voters feel the same way, that our votes will directly be reflected on this in part, if not mostly. And that's all it has. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. John Cherry. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. I'd just like to speak for the Chamber of Commerce here, that a couple of things we have coming up, just to announce to the public. On March 29th, we have our annual Business Expo, which will be at the Rec Center this year. We decided to move it there just because of the parking situation would accommodate more people, make it easier to get in and out, and we won't have to be moving tables and chairs back and forth. We appreciate the middle school, all the help that they provided, and it was very successful last year. I just think it'll be better to have it there. And also, as we are signing up business members or owners for booth space at the Business Expo, we're offering a discount if they'll go ahead and sign up for Nature Fest as well and commit to that. And so that will be always, it's always the second Saturday in September, excuse me, that's September the 13th. So make plans for a big event this year. It's our 30th annual. Thank you very much. We'll have some more announcements coming up, and I'll tell you about that later.
Do y'all have a job for that company?
No, the F cap is hosting that, and it'll be early...
April 8th?
April the 8th, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, we have a business spotlight, Ms. Bailey Booze. I'll turn that over to city manager.
Is Ms. Bethany Jones here tonight? She has been contacted to let her know about tonight, but maybe the bad weather has held her from not being here.
Okay, thank you. Next item is awards and recognitions. Are there any awards or recognitions from the board this evening?
No, ma'am.
I have a few I'd like to highlight. We had several of our Fairview High School wrestlers go to state. Congratulations to them. I also would like to recognize our Teachers of the Year. We had Ms. Kim Dartery, which is our CFO, Mr. Tom Dartey's wife, Ms. Barbara Hall. Any relation?
None.
None, okay. Ms. Tina Cantrell and Ms. Jo Nola, and those are the four Teachers of the Year. And just if you're out and about or involved with the schools or have an opportunity, the schools are, the schools are one of our biggest opportunities in Fairview. So being that they are Teachers of the Year, I just want to thank them for their dedication and all the other teachers that are just tirelessly helping our children become the best. So I just wanted to thank them. And the last thing is, this evening, I would like to introduce, we did have a wonderful interview process from 1:00 to 5:00 PM today on the candidates for the city manager. We had wonderful dialogue and conversation, and I would like to introduce a few that are in the room. We did have Ms. Pamela Caskey that returned for family and for the storm potential. So she did leave, and I would like at this time to introduce Mr. Frank Hummer. Thank you.
Sir.
And Mr. Michael Young.
Eric.
You know, Mr. Wayne Hall. And as I said, Ms. Pamela Caskey was with us, but she did go on back due to the storm and family arrangements. There be no other... Do you have any awards and recognitions this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item number six on the agenda is public announcements. Are there any public announcements from the board this evening?
And I would like to again recognize the emission testing Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 till noon, and let everyone be watchful of the bad weather that's approaching soon.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to reiterate what I shared last meeting, because I believe it's a very important when the information of getting connected to Fairview and staying connected to Fairview, I just want to share with the public and let them know that our website is fairview-tn.org. Updates are there, and you can also, at the bottom right of the homepage, sign up to get updates. They'll come to you as soon as they are posted by city staff. Also, we have the video on demand. All of our meetings are videotaped, and they are downloaded onto the website, and you'll find those under City TV. We also have a YouTube channel, Facebook, Twitter. The websites are updated, and you can sign up. I've said that Comcast, Channel 19, and then it also records and replays, and U-verse is being worked on.
Yes, ma'am. We're waiting on the installation.
Any minute. Stay tuned. U-verse will be up, which is an AT&amp;T internet access, and then the Fairview Observer. So stay connected with Fairview, and we'd love to hear from you. The website has all of our information, how to reach us, and I believe each one of us would be willing to take a call, take an email, or visit and meet with anyone at any time. So thank you for your interest. And the next item is the approval of the minutes. The minutes from the... Do we have minutes?
I think we have any minutes.
Do we have minutes?
No, we don't have any to approve this time.
Okay. No minutes for approval. Oh, business, there is none, so we'll move on to new business. New business A is discuss and/or take action on Art in the Park. And is there a commissioner sponsoring? Brought forth. Okay, Mr. John Cherry with the Chamber of Commerce, please share with us. Welcome.
I can only give you some preliminary information on that right now. We're still in the planning stages of that. We have two dates selected for that. Let me just tell you about the dates first, and then I'll give you the details. We've checked with the park, and we've reserved June 21st and June 22nd for the entire weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and also as an alternate, October 11th and 12th. Art in the Park is something that a lot of towns have done. It's an arts and crafts show. You have questions about what it is? Want me to go into that?
Oh, sure, yeah. Share with us.
Okay. Well, it brings in a lot of people from around the area. You bring in artisans who do, you know, oil paintings, basket weaving, pottery, all sorts of, anything that has to do with art. And they display their crafts, and it draws people from all over. The idea is that we have an asset in this town that if Franklin had it, they would be, all of their economic development people and their chambers and their city would have been exploiting this jewel that we have. They'd have 3 million tourists a year coming to it. Last year, I think, I'm quoting Commissioner Bissell, I think we had 175,000 visitors to our park, which is, you know, is a sizable amount of people, quite a bit more than our population. But this tourism will make up for a lack of population when you're talking about bringing, you know, nice retailers to Fairview. If you want an O'Charlies, or you want a Starbucks, or you want these kind of folks coming and opening businesses here, they're not coming for 8,000 population. Now Walmart came, and Publix came, because those are big box retailers, and they draw from a larger area. These smaller retailers and restaurants, they depend on a local population. Tourism makes up for that. I know the state will help us with our efforts, and we can get the park information. We already have brochures about the park. It needs to be on the interstates, at the welcome centers, and the rest stops. We need to be doing what a lot of towns are doing with an asset like we have. The Bowie Nature Park, I've said this before and again and again, 722 acres is nearly the size of Central Park in New York. I think it's like 840 something acres. So we should be doing a better job of promoting this park and bringing in an upscale tourist, which an event like Art in the Park would do for us. We are wanting to sponsor this. What we normally do is this Nature Fest is our biggest event of the year, and it takes a lot of effort for us to do this. Our idea on Art in the Park is to hire an event coordinator to help us with this, because it's just too much for us, with 10 board members and a few other volunteers, to coordinate this whole thing and do two large events a year. The towns that do this successfully and bring in a large tourism base to their town do it about six times a year. They start around Memorial Day, and they finish up in the fall. They do it once a month. Now, that's a big bite for us to start off with, so we really can't do that. The last thing we want to do is make a bad attempt at a good idea. So I think we should do it once this year, see how it goes, plan it well, get an events coordinator that's professional at this kind of stuff, have it coordinated with some music and the right kind of food vendors, and let somebody that, like I said, is professional that can handle this kind of an event. And so we're still in the planning stages of this. Well, we want to present this to the board for the reason that we're going to talk to you about is we want your support. We need coordinated efforts with fire and police and the park people, since this is going to be an all-weekend event, the booths that'll be there will have to be watched overnight and that kind of thing. So it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and it's going to take a lot more coordination. So any questions?
You shared earlier about a town that had done this...
For decades. It's called...
What's the name of it again?
One of the largest arts and crafts shows on the East Coast is in Blowing Rock, North Carolina.
Blowing Rock, yes.
Now, in 1988, I was the leasing manager for Shops on the Parkway. It was an outlet mall there. It had Polo, Ralph Lauren, Anne Klein, a whole bunch of people like that. So you're familiar with outlet malls. There's one in Lebanon that's similar to that. The company I was with specialized in resorts. They like to go to upscale resorts. That's another subject for some other time. You know, Fairview's probably a candidate for an outlet mall, because we're far enough away from the regional malls that we could pull that off, maybe put it out by the interstate. We need a developer that would be interested in us. But Art in the Park in Blowing Rock has been a successful event that they do a half a dozen times a year for the last at least three or four decades, and it has become a large event for a lot of reasons. It was already an upscale resort to begin with. So we're in our infancy, you know, just thinking and talking about this, but it's something that I've been wanting to do for a long time, and we have a much larger park than they have. Blowing Rock has a park about the size of this ground that's sitting out here in front of City Hall, and they pull that off. That little 1,500 population town swells up to 30,000, 40,000 people for that weekend. It's just amazing. I mean, if you ever get a chance to go to Blowing Rock, which is near Boone and Hickory, North Carolina, it'll just knock your socks off. It's right there at the Eastern Continental Divide. The Blue Ridge Parkway goes right through the middle of it. And anyway, I'm very excited about the idea, as you can probably tell, but I think we have to do it right to, for everybody. I'd hate to, like I say, if we do, make a bad attempt at a good idea, everybody's going to say, "Oh, that was stupid. Why did we do that?" You know? So let's do it right, and you'll be surprised what we can do, and the tourism that we'll bring to town, the money that will come to town, will benefit the merchants, and when it benefits the merchants and the city, it benefits everybody. It'll create jobs. We shouldn't be scared to bring more people to the park if we bring the right kind of folks to the park. So, you know, I don't know if there's going to be opposition to this. I have no idea. Haven't really talked much about it, but if we get our tourism base up in Fairview, to me, that's all positive. I think that's the kind of smart growth. When people talk about smart growth, that's what I vision as smart growth, because it's going to take a long time for us to get population numbers that we need to get, the kind of upscale or whatever, not going to use the word upscale, but the kind of retailers and businesses and restaurants and things that I hear folks asking for. And they don't understand when I say, "Well, you just can't get an O'Charlies or Starbucks or whatever. You name the restaurant you like. You have to drive to Cool Springs or to Nashville to go to, because they just don't pump to small populations." Tourism can get us there faster.
And have you already talked with the park, and you've coordinated everything? Mr. Hall, you've...
Well, I did talk to Mr. Hall, and I did set the dates with the park. We have their support as far as the people. We talked about some alternate dates, but they had something else going on.
Keith? Can I ask you a question?
I mean, I had a first choice on a date that I couldn't get because of that reason.
Okay. Mr. Paisley, being director of the park, do you have anything that you want to comment as we discuss this that you, I mean, you've been discussing this, so is there anything you want to share with us?
Well, our concerns, and I think, you know, working with John a little bit more on it, would be where would the people be staying for this two-day event? Do they have RVs, hotels? What kind of accommodation are they going to have? And are we going to allow RVs to be in the park while this event's going on?
Is there a way that we can maybe request a proposal of exactly what type of logistics that may come about that we have not experienced with an overnight event?
We'll have to think about stuff like that. I see the, more of the exhibitors having needs like that. I think the tourist, because here's the difference between Fairview and Blowing Rock. Blowing Rock was in the middle of nowhere. I mean, it was an hour and a half from Charlotte. Fairview is, you know, we're one mile from the Davidson County line, okay? And the population base around us within 15, 20 miles is here. I think we'll draw a local tourist and not an out-of-town tourist so much. So I don't think we need hotel accommodations and RV parks for those folks, but we probably will need something for the exhibitors if they're coming from, you know, a long distance.
Do you have estimated idea? Do you have a projection that you can share about the number of vendors, like other events that they kind of circuit and travel with?
Well, just talking to a few people, there is kind of a critical mass, and then there's too many. So I'm not sure about that number yet. I was, when I first started thinking about it, I was thinking in terms of what we've done with Nature Fest, and that's been in the 80 to 100, you know, vendor range, and we certainly got room for that many or more. But I'm not sure that that will be the right... I think they would like less, not more. But that's something that an event coordinator who's already familiar with the artisan folks, there are clubs and people, associations that they can talk to that can get us that kind of information.
As I've shared with you before, I think it's an amazing opportunity, and I think it's a great idea. I just don't feel like I have enough information this evening to...
And neither do we.
Not knowing what I'm voting, so I do think it's a great idea and would look forward to hearing more projections or plans, and that's my comment.
Yeah, if logistically we can't pull it off this year, you know what? I would be just like the rest of you, be in favor of punting this year and trying again next year when we have the logistics for it. We're not going to get another hotel or two, you know, in a year, but we've got to figure out a way to do this. And I don't think that this first time is going to draw probably any more than we get for Nature Fest, you know? Nature Fest has been going on for a long time. It's 30 years this year. This would be our first attempt at this. I would be surprised if we had any more than what we usually get for Nature Fest. It just depends on how much publicity we get and how many sponsors we have. And how big of, you know, if we have some music people come, it would depend on how big that name is. You know, one of the people, one of the events people we talked to talked about bringing a huge name and maybe charging people 20 bucks per person to come in and see you name, just name your big, big name, you know? Because that would cost, you know, that would cost a lot of money. So that was just one idea. That would draw a lot of people. So there's a lot of ideas that are still being kicked around. Really too early here to talk about this. I kind of thought I might be on the agenda tonight, and so I'm glad I showed up.
Okay. Well, and just to circle back around, one more question. I know you haven't... What was the suggested date that you worked out with Keith?
With what now?
What was the date that you were working with?
The dates, we have two preliminary dates, June 21st and 22nd, and October 11th and 12th. Those are the two weekends. So the June being, you know, probably pretty predictable hot weather, right? Not knowing whether to rain or not. And then October is actually, when we were talking to the Blowing Rock people, that's their best out of the six. That's their best one, because it's leaf season. And I mean, that's when the, you know, they just get better, they get a better turnout, better quality turnout, too. So, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Albert. Are we done?
Thanks, John. Ready to move on? Item number B, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2104-02.
Bill number 2104-02 is an ordinance for the amendment of the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Move for approval.
Sir.
First and second, any discussion?
I would like for you to go through and kind of give us a rundown. I mean, I know some of it's the school. I'm looking at you, Tom, like, "Who are you looking at?" I saw that look. Some of it is the school on here. What all does the breakdown? Do we have something written?
All the community, it's the community garden.
Okay. I know, part of it's the school, community garden. What else?
That's all.
That's all it is. 5,000 for the community garden and 5,000 for seeds.
Okay.
10,000 total.
I know, but that's supposed to be five. That's what we voted. That's why I'm asking.
Five and fives.
It's five for the seeds, and then five extra for just the general, get them started with other stuff. Two.
I know. But here's my problem with it is, is I think we, it was 5,000 in total, and it was 25 each, so 25 to the tree and 25 to the, this community garden. Am I wrong? I mean, I may be wrong. I'm just pretty sure that that's what I remember. I mean, I'm sure they would love, don't get me wrong, I'm sure they would love 5,000 each, but I need somebody to double-check that on the record, or I'm going to do it right here. And I could be wrong, and I don't want to delay, but I think it's an important matter.
Well, I can, if you don't mind me interjecting here. That's what I thought, too.
I also.
There was a total of 5,000, but then when you check the minutes, that's not what you said. You said 5,000 for each.
I had a debate with Teresa on this, and it even went to the city attorney, and I have some emails. If, I mean, don't get me wrong, if we voted 10, then that's fine, but I'm just questioning whether or not that's what we voted.
Have they already been paid, Tom?
There is a, there was a budget ordinance that I believe was, was a $5,000.
But have we actually given them a check?
No.
No. So if it is only $5,000, we can correct it.
Is my understanding that this...
Can I see that?
Yes.
Because I believe we deferred that. Yes. This is when Crystal was still here.
Yes.
Hang on, I'm going to, I have this.
And the item of 41000-790 is the exact item, and it's $5,000, which is the recollection of three on the board. Do y'all have anything to weigh in on what your recollection of?
I was thinking it was 2,500 a piece.
2,500 a piece, which is a 5,000 total, and that's the item, and it also adds up to this expenditure that matches. And I'm going to say that we don't have the right information to make the decision this evening.
Well, and here's the thing...
Or we amend the resolution.
Here's the thing. I do believe there was some question, because the way my original motion read, that I had to go back and question myself, because in the motion, it was my understanding that it was 2,500 for each, but somebody at the end said something about 5,000 each. So I had Teresa research it, and she even emailed the city attorney. So I do have emails, but it may be something, if you don't recall, maybe you can look back, Larry, and see. I want it done. I want the school to have its money. I want to proceed. I hate to hold it up, but I want to get it right.
How can we change the resolution?
amend the motion to $5,000.
It fits the board's desire. You can amend it to be 2,500 and then pass it subject to it being... to it being as amended.
Because the item that, do you have a date on that? The item that was deferred is the exact same expenditure line item, and it's 5,000, not the 10,000 that we have tonight, so...
Yeah, I wanna, Patty's been our lead on it, I wanna do whatever she thinks is what she wants.
Well, I'm making a motion.
I want to cheat the school, but...
We amend it to $5,000, total 2,500 each, and defer any increases to a later date.
Excellent.
Second. They're gonna work.
Well, I was just trying to see where we had, because that was the same expenditure, and it got deferred because of the other things on the...
And when you look into that, we bring it back up.
Ordinance we wasn't ready for.
But it'll be corrected for 2,500.
Any discussion?
Well, I would, I mean, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm fine with that, but I do have it in here somewhere that I could have read it. I'm fine with the, I feel like that's what it was, so...
Storm's coming. Okay, any other discussion?
Storm's here.
All those in favor of the amended resolution of the 5,000?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Discuss and/or take action on recommendation from the Planning Commission, Bill 2014-04.
It is a substitute bill, 2013-03, ordinance number 820, an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Old Nashville Road, owned by Timothy R. Mangrum and wife Jessica Mangrum, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 042, parcel 06512, 1.03 acres from RM 12 to RS 10. Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
They do have a representative here.
Representative for this property? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, discuss and/or take action on recommendation from the Planning Commission, Bill 2014-05. I'd like to record to show that I recuse myself because of personal interest.
This is substitute bill, 2013-26, ordinance 821. It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the City of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Horn Tavern Road, owned by Walter C. Totty and wife Beverly D. Totty, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listen of Assessment Roll Map 22, parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R 40 to R 20. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion?
I've got a question that was brought up to me by somebody else on the outside. You've already moved trees and things over there, haven't you?
Yes, we cleared out some underbrush of it.
Okay, did you use any heavy equipment for that?
Yes.
Was it, did that need to be approved for heavy equipment to do that with?
Well, a grading permit would have been the only thing, but that was usually for moving dirt. What we done was cleaned out the underbrush of the trees.
Does anybody else have any information on that? I was just told that as far as having to have the grading permit, any heavy equipment moved on the property would require a permit?
Well, they, I've never been told that, but brush just...
I'm just asking, I don't know. Mr. Hall?
Mr. Sutton, I actually went by with the city engineer, and didn't move over an acre, so it didn't require a permit.
Okay. Any other? Yes, sir.
If could, Vice Mayor, there was, at least I received several contacts from citizens out in that area. Now, this is first read, right? So if we pass this tonight, we then will set a second read along with a public hearing?
That's correct.
So they'll have their opportunity to come and speak at that time. Is that correct? Is my understanding correct?
That is correct procedure.
And the public hearings have been posted and everything on the...
There'll be a resolution to set a public hearing at the same time or before the second read.
There's already been a public hearing, and there'll be another one.
Yeah.
And I guess that's because we went back and we started the whole process over, because the signs didn't get out like they were supposed to, and that sort of thing. Is that, is my understanding correct?
The signs did get out, it wasn't posted in the newspaper.
Okay. That was my only question, was...
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item number E, discuss and/or take action on vacant board seats. We have a few board seats that are available and open, and we've had some applications that have come in, and I'd like to address. The first one is the vacant Planning Commission seat. We have Mr. Mitch, Mitchell Doughty. And last time, we had Ms. Henrietta Hall speak, is Mr. Wayne Lowman here? Okay? And Mr. Ron Rowe, did you speak last time? Okay, so Mr. Doughty and Mr. Lowman, we'd like to open the floor up for you to share with us your interest in the city and participating and putting in your application. I'm sorry if I sound like I'm hollering, but this rang, but we'd like for you to approach the podium, you two gentlemen, and maybe share with us what your interest is, so we'll know a little bit about why you're applying, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you for having me, Commissioners, I appreciate it. Part of the reason I'd like to serve as in the role is that my mother was born here ninety years ago, and my wife and I live here now, and it's our home, and we don't plan on leaving. So to that end, I'd like to participate in the intelligent growth of our town, because I think we're at a pretty dynamic point in our history with potential growth. With the Walmart coming in, I think we, it's a pivotal time for us to be intelligent about where we go with this going forward. I spent thirty-four years in development and construction all over the country, from Texas to Colorado to Pennsylvania, which has given me a pretty interesting perspective on different ways to develop and plan and grow towns. So I want to be a part of that as we go forward, and be smart about it, and not grow for the sake of growing, but to intelligently grow this town so in five years, in ten years, in twenty years, when people are coming in behind us, we can all look back and go, we did a pretty good job of this thing. And also to have a place where people want to come. You know, people leave here now to go to Franklin, and they leave to go to Dixon. And if we're smart about the way we grow things here, we will become that. Our own citizens won't have to leave to go be entertained or go to eat dinner. So I think, right now, from today going forward, the next five years, ten years, pretty pivotal time for us, and I'd really like to be a part of that.
Great, thank you, appreciate your interest.
Hello, I'm Mitch Doughty. I've been here, living here since 1978. I currently live here, I have a business here in Fairview. The reason I'd like to be on the Planning Commission is, pretty much like he said, I'd like to be part of what's going on here, and get the opportunity to look the plans over and go through the process and kind of, you know, make good decisions on who comes in, what comes in, you know, to our city. And, you know, like I've told a lot of folks sitting up here, everybody in Fairview, they leave, they go to Dixon, they go to Bellevue, they go to Franklin, to do things. I'd like to see some of those things come into Fairview and be part of bringing those things to Fairview, so that's what I'd like to see come, you know, and happen to Fairview and be part of it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I ask, and I hate to put y'all on the spot, but those that are here, since we're actually considering taking a vote, if you would come up again, and just if you give us a little bit, a tidbit again, I remember what you said, but it just, as far as, I mean, you've got a lot of great candidates, I mean, it's a great problem to have, so...
It is a good problem to have, it's an awesome problem to have. Fairview is in the, on the cusp of change, unlike we've ever had before. I've lived here thirty years, or more, it's probably more. I have a background in interior design, graduate of O'More, have worked for twenty-five years in the business, mostly not commercial, but in residential, some commercial. I am for growth, smart. I don't want it to take over and too quickly, to where we have too much stuff and nobody deals, it's empty. We have to be careful. But I would like to have a restaurant other than the Mexican and the Chinese, but I love them, but I need something else. And I'm sure that a lot of people in Fairview are looking forward to staying home and, you know, or should I say, staying home in Fairview and not having to go to Dixon and all those places. But my main reason for wanting to join the Planning Commission is because I have grandchildren who live here and will grow up here, and I would so much love that when I'm not here anymore, one day, far in the future, that they can say, look, Grandma helped with, you know, getting that done, just like they can look and say, Grandma helped paint the high school, or set up the playground, or, I like to leave a legacy that's a positive one.
Thank you.
Any questions? No?
No, thank you.
Greetings, I'm Ron Rowe, and my reason for requesting to be appointed to this current opening is to extend my term on the Planning Commission. Right now, I'm the designate for the mayor, and that is up in 2014. The open seat is up in 2015, so I'd like an opportunity to go on to a longer term. I'm excited on the Planning Commission for a couple of meetings now, I've contributed, I think I have the experience. I think people, if they've watched the last couple of meetings, that I'm in favor of being open to the public, explaining what's going on, so they have an understanding of a decision, coming, finding facts of all the applicants that come before us, and then making a recommendation to the board. So I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have one. Okay, questions from the board?
Mr. Lowman, yes, what is your profession? I'm senior vice president of construction.
Any other questions?
Are we gonna have any kind of discussion?
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Well, me personally, I found it very difficult, because we have some great candidates, and one of the things, Mr. Rowe, you have added a needed dynamic to the Planning Commission, and I would definitely love to see you return. But also, I, as a Planning Commission, one of the things that I like to see is diversity, and I don't want to get too much one-sided of builders' constructions, too much, you know, but you have to have that knowledge and experience, so it's a fine line. So I just was wondering, the mayor's seats, how, you, when her term's up, your term's up, so as that goes, how long is the seat that he's filling? Which would be Mr. Benson's, is that correct, or who's?
It ends in two, August?
2015.
June.
Okay. And then, so in 2014, so, okay.
It would roughly be six more months.
Six months, yeah, okay. Okay.
Depending on when.
Well, if my list is right, and it may not be, but the list I have is right, we have one, two, three more expiring this June.
30th. Right?
That's correct. So in essence, we fill in one tonight, but that expires for 15, but we're gonna address the issue again in June for three more. So, I just thought that was interesting information. Obviously, we can't pick four people tonight, but we will have an opportunity to look at the ones that are already on there and see what, you know, their preferences are, and whether or not there'll be some more openings later on. And in all honesty, I think Mr. Rowe's done a good job, from what I've heard in his participation, but we already got him. And so I probably not gonna vote for Mr. Rowe tonight, because already got him. He's on there representing the mayor, so at least he's good through November, and I'll have another opportunity to address that when he comes through in June. So I'm gonna give my consideration to the other three folks to, and it's nothing against you personally, Mr. Rowe, it's just, it's a way to get two rather than one.
I'm gonna open the floor for nominations.
Can we allow Mr. Rowe, he was gonna respond to?
Yes, sir. I just want to say, I don't have a problem if you so choose to do that. I'm here to serve the city in the best way that I can. I do want to point out that, and previously, I did bring up to the city attorney that your, the city codes lay out the Plan Commission expiration dates, so that one comes due every year, and that's not how it is right now. So it might be a consideration for the board to review that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We need to look at that and see how we can get back in...
That's being reviewed now.
Okay.
Let me look at those.
That doesn't affect the vote tonight?
Pardon me?
That doesn't affect the vote tonight, we're filling a vacant seat.
We're filling a...
Vacant seat.
A resigned seat that expires June of 2015, and the floor's open for nominations.
I'll nominate Henrietta Hall.
Other nominations?
Mayor, I'd nominate Mitch Doughty.
Will there be any other nominations? Not nomination ceased, we'll move on to vote, we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Bussell?
Doughty.
Commissioner Carroll? Hall. Commissioner Sutton?
Doughty.
Commissioner Johnson?
Doughty.
I vote Hall. We have three far, Mitch Doughty, and the new seat is filled. Thank you, sir, for your service, and we will correspond, or if you would like to correspond with the city manager on the meetings and the schedule of events, and making sure that he has correspondence also with the chairman, Ms. Anderson. And that way, you'll have the information sent to you in a proper form for review, and you have those two to correspond if you have questions about schedules. Thank you.
I want to say about the five, I appreciate very much, tonight, there are three more that have just been announced, and maybe tonight, we'll give you a date of when the mayor's appointments are made.
Would it be proper for us just to hold on to those applications and automatically consider them again in the June, or whatever the new revised schedule is, or would these folks have to re-apply?
Would, would the applicants that are currently on file, would you like to hold those for consideration at a later date? Mr. Lowman? Ms. Hall? Mr. Rowe? If you can, please keep those as fresh on file, and they do not have to apply again. Upon the time of opening, they'll be inquired if they want to, and we'll open the seats and open nominations. Okay? Good question, thank you. All right. And do we have any applications for the Industrial Board this evening? Would anyone that has turned in an application for the Planning Commission have a consideration that they would like to be nominated for the Industrial Board?
Not all at once, now.
I just wanted to make it very clear, what Industrial Board is, is over, and what their job restriction is, and what, I don't know what that is.
Okay, very good point. We'll let the chairman of the Industrial...
Not me.
That's not you.
It was Mr. Benson. Go ahead, lady.
Okay, so we have a new order of officers that obviously will be. The Industrial Board meets as needed, at least once a year, and it's brought to the attention from the Board of Com- attention from the Board of Commission as a request for the Industrial Board to review for bonds. And that's about my extent of knowledge, so you're welcome to ask.
Bonds, acquisition loans, there's several different things that it involves in, but you get more out of that than.
They went several years without meeting, and then they have to meet once a year, and they did new bylaws. So they've been very active in the last year. So it may be beneficial that the Industrial Board, you could inquire what their meeting schedules are, and then speak to them about what their agendas have been. Are the agendas on the website?
As they're posted, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you could find archives of agendas, or be able to ask the recorder for agendas of the past, to see what type of business that crosses their meetings.
It is a requirement that we have one meeting a year, and we are anticipating getting much more involved as industrial growth in the area, as the name implies to it. I've been on it for several years, and we went for three years, met three times, and this year, I bet we've probably met six or seven times in the last six, seven months. So we're getting more active with bylaws and things like that.
I put my application in for the Planning Commission, but I rejected it when my mother showed up.
You better.
Right. She always wins, but, like she should. But I would like to put my name in consideration for this, as my application's already taken for a Plan Commission. It was just not read tonight, but it was last meeting.
We have an application on file for Mr. John Hall. We have a vacant seat of the Industrial Development Board. What are the wishes of the board?
I wanna know what Ms. Hall's gonna do first.
Oh, I didn't want that. I'm just saying, I didn't know what they had to do.
So it's okay if John has it then?
And we do have on the website, to your point, Ms. Henrietta, and I appreciate you bringing that out. We do have the boards posted on the website, and if anyone in the public does have questions on any of the boards, I would just encourage you to contact someone on the board and maybe ask general questions, because it is, it is an opportunity for you to say, "What exactly does that board do?" And could I be of service to that? But it was an excellent question. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I add one thing to the Industrial Board?
Yes.
It hasn't been a big issue in the City of Fairview yet, but at some point in time it probably will be. If the city ever decided that it wanted to get involved in any incremental financing projects with any industry, and that usually is large industries, but I could see that happening at some time here, that cannot be considered until it goes to the Industrial Board. They are the leader in that. They have to be, they have to consider and pass and make recommendations and authorize any type of incremental financing.
Okay, thank you.
I move to nominate John Hall.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, John. I appreciate you throwing your hat in the ring. Thank you for your service. Welcome aboard. The Industrial Board. All right, item number three is discuss and take action on vacant Board of Zoning Appeals seat. Did we have an application presented for that seat? Okay. Well, I'm not even gonna attempt to answer your question on that one. Would anybody like to give a overview of the Board of Zoning Appeal Committee?
Is anybody here interested?
Oh.
There you go.
Mr. Hall!
Scoring outside.
Would you like to share with what the boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. The Board of Zoning Appeals is the board that addresses when a applicant in the zoning, I mean, the codes official has a dispute relative to a zoning issue, or any zoning issue that comes up that is denied by, say, the codes officials, involving a misinterpretation of the zoning code, a misapplication of the zoning code, that's where the appeal is taken to, and the Zoning Appeals Board makes a ruling on that. And the appeal from the Zoning Appeals Board is by writ of search or writ to the court.
I'm moved to defer that action till a later date.
Well, my question was, are there any applications that are currently on file that you would like to raise your hand and be considered for that board? Thank you. Moving on, discuss and/or take action of the vacant Park Board seat. This must be filled by a Planning Commission member, and it is by recommendation of the Planning Commission that Mr. Ron Rowe be the representative of the Fairview Park Board.
Motion approved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Rowe, for volunteering, and we look forward to you being a part of the Park Board. It meets on the first Monday of the month at 6:00 PM here in City Hall, and if you would, please plug in with the secretary, Mr. Jack Cannon, or city manager, Mr. Hall, and make sure you have understanding of the information that'll come to you prior, and then also the schedule of meetings. Okay? Anything else? We'll move on to city manager updates.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna thank you all for the opportunity today. It's been a very long day, but it's been a very enjoyable day. And I'd like to thank the Brenda Johnson, Susan Fox, and Tom Dartre for taking care of us at our reception and everything tonight. It was very nice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Staff comments this evening?
Um, as far as the revenues went this past month, it seemed like we're increasing a little bit. We are up to 50% of our budgeted allotment for the year, so we're lagging about a month behind. We brought in $423,954 in the month of January, put us a little over 2.6 million. We have brought in 61% of our property tax as of this time, so we're hopefully between now and the next week or so, bring in the rest of it. The sales tax increased a little bit, and I'm anxious to see how that increases in April and May. I think we'll be back on target. I'm really hopeful of that. As far as our expenditures, they seem to be declining slowly. We've got, we brought in, I mean, we spent $414,077, which put us at a total through January of 3.3. We're a little bit over where we wanted to be at this time, but we have a lot of early expenditures in the year as far as liability insurance and such. That's basically my report.
Can I actually go back, go back to one slide? Court costs at 50%? What are we doing to try to get those court costs covered? I know it's just they're not being paid. Am I right?
They took a big jump. They were, if you remember, they were at 30% after December. So we took a big jump in January. I don't know why they were lagging.
Well, I think we got the state involved a little bit more in suspension of drivers' lives, and front pay, court fees, fines, so.
I do know.
I'm sure that's helped. I just wondered, 'cause I knew it was way behind at one point.
Yes.
Because it turns into a civil matter rather than a criminal matter, and Larry don't know about that, and I do, but I'm glad to see that. And hopefully, it gets better.
They've been busy on Fridays.
Going back into expenditures, you made a statement about upfront or first-of-the-year expenditures at 74% of the budget in parks. Can you give any reason why that might be a red flag?
Yes, there were some expenditures before I started working here that I believe dealt with the paving of the Bowie Park Road going into Bowie Park, and there's, part of that was supposed to be paid through the Bowie Fund, and there still needs to be some items worked out that was not initially thought that were gonna come out of that, out of their budget. I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a little $21,000.
And I guess the same question would come up in finance?
Uh, well, we got, a lot of expenses have been doubled because we pretty much, the whole office is turned over. Everybody, everybody's training, everybody was going to school, then they quit going. Now, we have to go to school, so it's double payments on a few items. There is another salary. Plus, there was the expenditures of paying the amounts of leave owed to the people that were leaving that had quite a bit of money that came out when they left.
And general and admin, I guess I'll go there, too.
And that's more of the same. There have been some turnover areas, and there is, we're starting into the budget process. We will be going hard and heavy starting this next week, and I am still in the process of analyzing, and there will be some recommendations to the board in March. There may be a couple of tweaks that need to be made. I do know there was one, and I showed it to you earlier, there was one ordinance that did, that got deferred. We may need to re-address that. And then, there's a couple, it's not, there's just a couple of minor line items that needs to be researched and dealt with.
But our target now would be 58%, and these are in the upper 70s.
Yes, but there was a huge amount of the, of that general administrative was our early insurance payments early on. I mean, I know when I came home, I looked at, first time I came up, we were well over 50% at my first meeting in general administrative. And there's a lot of, there's still some research that needs to be done on this to exactly see what needs to be done.
And this is through, through February or through January 31st? January 31st?
Yes.
So we have five months left in the budget at 77% in some of the departments?
Correct.
Okay, then we have some concerns that we'll be talking about.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add?
Any other comments?
If I could add something? It's important to remember, though, when you're talking about percentages of budget use, that, say, for instance, the finance department has a budget of around $100,000. So in actual revenue or money spent, that 70% of that compared to 58% can be not that significant amount of money. Now, that $12,000 is something to sneeze at, but it's not, it doesn't sound as ominous when you say they're $12,000 over budget and they don't have any big-ticket line items to the end of the year as it does to say 70%. And it's sort of the same way with the park. When you take out for the park, the money that was spent, that was infused into their budget, and then turn right around and paid back out for the road out there, then what you find is that the fact that they're overrunning, one, it's not the full 74% because the extra money in and the extra money out creates that. It's 100% exchange there. But that, when you break it down, they're actually probably running maybe $7,000 or $8,000, $9,000 ahead of what they should be running, and that, again, while that is not, you know, sneeze, somebody, if I found $9,000 laying on the street, I'd consider it a windfall. But, but it's not the same ominous that you have when you say you're running at 74% with five months left. You, they don't have any big-ticket items to pay for, the big-ticket items have already been paid for, and so if they live within their budget through the end of the year, it will gradually get smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. So I just kinda wanted to add that.
I appreciate that point made. When we get to 100% and we're not at the end of the budget, it then becomes an issue, and.
Then we got a problem.
Watch it before that happens, and that's how it don't happen. But I appreciate your report. Other questions? Comments? Thank you. Other staff comments this evening? Mr. Paisley from the Park Department is waiting.
Mr. Day is, his wife is delivering in the morning, and so he is either on the way to the hospital or getting prepared to go to the hospital so that they can induce in the morning.
Fantastic.
So he felt like he needed to be home tonight, getting ready to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Paisley?
My, my big thing is, Middle Tennessee is requesting that, and it's not, we didn't ask them to do this, they would like to hold either a workshop or a town hall-type meeting to answer citizens' concerns or your concerns, and I think we need to move on it kinda quickly so that we don't lose out on possibly gaining some stuff out of the thing without them coming in and taking it from us.
Are you asking for us to ask the city manager to move forward, setting a date for an informational meeting with Middle Tennessee?
I, that's, he asked me to do that, so.
In discussion, Mr. Hall, would you please gather three dates that would be?
It's not on the menu.
Uh-huh? Go ahead. Oh, it's not voted on anyway?
No, I was just.
Yeah, I was just vote happy. Would you please ask Middle Tennessee Electric for three dates and inquire our opportunity to make a majority, and then we could have that as a open?
Yes, ma'am, and I think you already have a workshop scheduled for March 6th, right? Okay.
So that would not be a date?
But it doesn't necessarily have to be the Thursday. It would either be that, it probably wouldn't be the second Thursday either, 'cause we need to start budget talks at some point in March, I would hope.
Yes, ma'am.
So it would probably be an off day. So if you can get three dates from Middle Tennessee Electric executives with Keith's overview, and then share with us, and we'll try to do a majority, and then open it to the public for a special meeting.
Mayor, if I could, ask a question. Keith, the, whomever you're dealing with, is it the same person that was here?
Yes, Matt.
Did he, did he officially threaten eminent domain or condemnation?
No, 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 he did not. I just, I just wanna make sure that we jump on trying to get any, anything we can receive from them and make sure it's done, you know, properly, whether it be trees, grasses, trail movement. I just wanna make sure that we're proceeding, and they, they asked for this meeting, so.
Okay. Within the next 10 days is fine. If you can correlate that, that would be at least an open dialogue for us to get started to meet. And I agree, we do need to.
Keith and I'll get with Mr. Bean, and we'll set it, and then we'll poll the board and see what's convenient for y'all.
Well, and we definitely wanna be able to run it in the paper, so that's gonna be key.
Yeah.
And that would be open to the public meeting, and that way, we can have a workshop setting with Middle Tennessee Electric on the easement issue on Bowie Park.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just to add that for the public.
And Land Trust, whether it be Emily Parrish or one of her people that work for her, they will be here for that.
Great.
We just give them a date, and they'll be here.
Okay. And if you'll pick three days opportunist, hopefully, we can get a majority to pull that, so we can have that discussion. Okay?
Keith, any discussion on telephone calls for the bridge over?
This is, this is part of this.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Just checking.
I, we're ready to go on as soon as we get some questions.
One of these days, I'm gonna be old and nix me up across the place. I just wanna.
I'll help you.
Thank you. Anything else from the Park Department?
Just got a little bit of an update on this, this weather. It's hit pretty hard. There are apparently some trees down, so be careful going home. I do have the street crew out there cleaning up. I do have the street crew out there cleaning up right now.
You should have told Commissioner Johnson that about three hours ago.
Thank you.
They were on their way.
A tree fell right in front of him on Bowie Park when we had a meeting earlier, so...
15 feet.
Any other?
Anything else?
Nope, unless you do. Any other staff comments this evening?
I believe that's it, ma'am.
Don't see any city attorney comments?
I have nothing further than that, Mayor, thank you.
Guess what? Sorry.
He has nothing. Communications from the Commissioners. Commissioner Sutton?
I'll make this real brief, and apologize for people, we've got two people running for office tonight, Lee Dryer, Dina Hood's here tonight, I don't see anyone yet, raise your hand up. Okay, they'll be, they'll be hanging around for as long as you want to fight the storm, to answer any questions, meet you, say hi, I'll cut to the chase on that one right there.
Local media.
The, I've got two, three things, but I'm gonna cut them real short tonight, and this has something to do with you. Have we paid the county for the library expansion yet?
No.
We have or have not?
No.
That's a good thing, because they've canceled that. The county decided not to go through with that program at this time.
The discussion...
When was this?
Yeah, he's been talking to her.
Interrupted.
It says take shelter.
We're under a warning, so we need to recess and go downstairs.
Go downstairs, everybody, please don't leave.
If no one has, I'll close the meeting.
Move adjourned.
Well, I had stuff, I did nothing to worth saving, my two cents. I emailed all y'all the emails that I was talking about.
Motion for adjournment? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you for your attention, be safe.